Five forty-eight. JD, if you would, please come to the microphone and lead us in the pledge.
May the audience please rise. Repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The audience can be seated.
Thank you, JD. Obviously, I'm not Mayor Rolf. I am Chris McConaughey, Mayor Pro Tem, sitting in for him this evening, so I'll be conducting tonight's meeting. We'll now move to our communications and start with the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
Nothing to add. Thanks.
Interim City Attorney?
Nothing to add.
Development?
Three things. First of all, per the council's direction, we've advertised for filling our General Plan Committee seats. We've had nine people express interest. Heather Everett will likely be reaching out to the council, if she hasn't already done so, to set up interviews. Our anticipation is that we'd like to have five to seven people serving on that General Plan Committee, since it's not a major overhaul. If the council feels that we need more than nine to select from, we can certainly re-advertise and open that up, but I just wanted to give you an update on that. And secondly, we've hired Kent Page. He's a new senior planner. He's not here tonight, but he'll be coming to the next city council meeting. We're excited to have him. He brings with him over twenty-five years of planning experience, so he'll be a great addition to our staff. And then, third, we've extended an offer to Nicole Stevens, who will be our newest code enforcement officer, and she begins on October ninth. So, thank you. And if the council has direction regarding the General Plan Committee, I'd appreciate it, but otherwise, we can work offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Finance?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Public Works?
Thank you. I have two things I wanted to share with the council. The first is with regards to Swift Water Way. Swift Water Way is one of our residential streets that's located in the Ranches subdivision. There's some problems with the asphalt there, so we're going in to fix that asphalt, but because it's a residential street, there's only about three inches of asphalt there. As we go and mill and overlay, it's going to put us really, really thin on what's remaining. And so, we're planning to keep the road open, but we're going to limit the access, try to keep trucks and heavy vehicles off of that to avoid them tearing up the little asphalt that's remaining. So, that's going to be happening here at the beginning of October. I just wanted to let the council know that we're going to be putting some limits on that road to try to preserve the one inch that we have left after the mill. So, the second item I wish to share with the council is with regards to the Public Works Building. We've been working with the contractor. They've really upped their game over the last week or two. They're going full steam. They have over thirty individuals that are working now on the masonry of the building, and they're working full steam on what their excavating crews, putting in the utilities, and clearing out the west side of the property to prepare the salt building, the vector dump area, and the bulk materials building, so we can receive those in time for the salt season. That's movement really quick. We were scheduled to do a punch list on those accessory structures today, but we held off. We're going to hold off a couple of weeks to be able to allow them to take care of some issues that we talked about this afternoon. So, there's no other questions.
I'll save my questions for offline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire.
Thank you. Just have two updates on our employees. We, as I told you, Marty retired, our secretary at Station 53. Ashley started last Monday. We also have two employees that started recruit training on Monday, and when they graduate in eight weeks, we'll be fully staffed. We're doing that recruit class in conjunction with West Valley City and Murray City. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll come back to police later. With council, Councilmember Burton.
You'll be off going the other direction.
Mix it up a little tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First, I want to welcome the scouts that are here with us, the additional scouts who just walked in. Thank you for coming and joining us at city council meeting today. Hope you enjoy it, and feel free to express some of your opinions when it's time. Last week, I mentioned the Chamber of Commerce has been holding several ribbon cuttings, and even though it's only been one week since our last meeting, I've attended two more ribbon cuttings since then. So, things are happening. We're pleased to see them happen, and I want to thank Justin and Russ for taking me on a tour of the new Public Works Building. There was a lot of activity happening there, so I'm glad to see that things are moving along. That's my report.
Councilmember Newton?
Thank you. I just returned from WasteCon in Baltimore, Maryland. That's the landfill convention. I just want to report that we have some of the lowest, if not the lowest, tipping fees for our cities in the nation. When I talk to others from around the country and tell them what we're paying, they just shake their heads and can't believe it. So, we have a very efficient group of people here, and we're very pleased with what's going on and the future for our waste. We have shared in a purchase of a landfill down west of Utah Lake, which will provide us an opportunity for ten years from now, when we have to close this landfill, to be able to move our waste there, and without being forced to use the private industries that have a tendency to jack up the rates when there's no other choice. So, we're in good shape with our landfill and where we're heading. There are other technologies that are new and that are starting to work and starting to see, that we'll look at down in the future, but right now, those technologies are running between eighty and a hundred dollars a ton. So, what we're doing right now is effective. It is safe, and we completely close those, cover those landfills and collect gas, and we are right now running engines out of this landfill, producing electricity for about three thousand homes off of the methane gas that the landfill is producing. So, we're doing a good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I wasn't going to bring this up, but I just decided, let's give it a shot. First of all, I'm going to bring this up. It's going to sound like it's all about me, but I want city staff to kind of look at it, that it's not about me. I'm bringing it up because it's happened to me, but I want to make sure it's not happening to our constituency in general. We have a project on my street. Wendell's been made aware of it for one instance, because all of a sudden, road closed signs showed up in front of my house, and I knew nothing about what was going on. I did contact the city at that point and found out there was a project that was coming, but they hadn't communicated. The city did a great job at that point of stepping in and saying, "Uh-uh, you're not starting this project until you've notified the neighborhood." At that point is where I've not communicated with the city anymore, just letting the project kind of go its course. The project, we received notice as a neighborhood, finally, that it was beginning Monday of a week ago. We were notified via a little notice that said it would be a six-day project, that said neighborhood access would be limited but would not be closed off. In effect, what happened was my driveway and my next-door neighbor's driveway has been severed and has been not accessible. You can see the frustration already coming from me. They did close it off and told my wife, I said, "Just let's deal with this." They said, "Six days. We can deal with it six days, and we'll just work through it." Today is day ten. I'm still not using my driveway. I finally reached out to the contractor today and didn't introduce who I was, other than my name's Chad. I'm impacted by what's going on. I'd like to know his status. The contractor said they had several problems that occurred and delayed the project. They tried to blame a little bit on rain. I said, "Okay, the rain was one day." But at this point, his best estimate is this Saturday to be done. So, overall, a six-day project's becoming closer to thirteen. So, this is a really small project. It was a really simple sewer upsizing. Wasn't even to benefit our neighborhood. It's to benefit a project that we approved as a council to the neighborhood to the west. But I just bring that on staff. I just want to pose this question, as far as what do we require our contractors, as far as notifications with neighborhoods, and do we follow up? Do we ensure they're complaining? Like, right here, they said this would be a six-day project. We're already at day ten. Is the city on them? Are we saying, "Come on, you've got to get this done. What are you doing?" Are there any kind of penalties to ensure they get done in a timely fashion? This is a small thing, again. I'm just thinking more on a global scale. What can we do to improve so that this doesn't happen just to any other neighborhood? And we already know that Seventy Souths had some problems, and that's a major project. This is a really simple one. And granted, it's just put two of us out of, you know, some convenience. It's kind of frustrating when someone delivers a package and basically says, "No FedEx, says it's undeliverable, and it's not going to come," and they send it back. Little things like that, it's really frustrating. But again, this isn't about me. I bring it up as just an experience that I've had. I'd really like the city just to kind of sit back, not looking for answers today, just to kind of just see what we can do better. Thank you. Sorry for the little digression there.
Councilman Nichols, we will look into that. I will discuss the matter tomorrow. At the staff meeting, we'll have an answer for you, at least share with you, and if you decide to share with others, that's perfectly reasonable, but I'll have an answer for you tomorrow.
Okay. I'd just like to see us in all projects, just to be real heavily involved, make sure this just doesn't happen. I feel bad for any neighborhood that has to go through that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
I appreciate the change-up, Mayor Pro Tem, because now I've written all my notes. I too want to echo Councilmember Nichols, just with some of the roads and what you bring up, Seventy South and such like that, I do think we can do better. You know, the on-time, under-budget type of philosophy, so I appreciate that. I also had a tour of the Public Works Building. Appreciate the work that's going in to that. Looking forward to when it is done. In our district, I've been working with some residents around Oak Crest Elementary on some traffic issues, and I want to thank the police department, who was able to go out and help do some non-ticket writing, behavior change hopefulness in changing some behavior as parents pick up their students from school and drop them off in the morning. So, the police presence has been appreciated, Chief Diamond. And then, just also wanted to remind everyone that the Valley Journals has put together Meet the Candidates for City Council at Copper Hills High School on October 12th at 6:30 PM. So, it'd be good to go there. You can submit your questions to the publisher, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And then, Chief Diamond, when we came around originally, any report from you this week?
Yes, I apologize. Apparently, there was some snafu at the door. We got that corrected real quick downstairs. Just to report back to the council, thank you, first of all, for those of you who are able to attend our banquet. It almost, there was a power failure and things, we made things happen to make sure that that worked, and the power came on right before, so we had a successful banquet. Thank you for those that were able to attend. Also, to let you know, we have identified people to fill jobs. We're still going through some of the psychological and medical exams for everyone but two of the, or one vacancy that we have right now, so hopefully, those will be filled at least by January, when the next academy class starts, and we'll get them in that academy class.
Thank you. And then, I have no further updates for this week, so we will move to citizen comments. First person that I have a sign up from is Alexandra Efremo.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, I, we have to advertise this October 12 candidate night, and I'm suggesting, please, let's put it on the marquee immediately. That's why we pay money for our marquee. We need to advertise these things. But anyway, once again, I'm an advocate of candidates that are running for council and mayor. When you run for an office, you should be open to comments when people call you. Jim Riding, I called him, and I went ahead, asked him a question, and instead of answering me, he hung up. Now, I'm a citizen of West Jordan. Let me tell you something. You candidates, you're going to have people that are going to call you on the phone, that you may not like the question or whatever, but you at least have a dialogue. You do not hang up. That's ethics, and that is, to me, Mr. Riding has no ethics to hang up on me. I mean, I've done a lot. I've tried to do a lot for West Jordan. And I mean, I'm, not that I should be a citizen that should be more communicative than any other citizen, but every citizen in West Jordan counts. You do not hang up, and you do not put campaign signs on property that is West Jordan City property, or Utah, or UTA, or the state of Utah. Before you put up a campaign sign, you should explore and make sure that you are liable for that placement of that candidate's sign. We have Kayleen Whiting. She put up a campaign on state property in Sandy, right by Jordan River. For heaven's sakes, that is state property. You cannot put campaign signs on state property. And even, I don't know, all these irrigation places, they're owned either by the irrigation company or West Jordan City. We don't even know. So, we're looking, we're taking a blind eye. We're saying it's okay. Kayleen has her sign way over into private property. If you're going to put a sign on the irrigation, you put it on the irrigation sign. This is one of my biggest pet peeves, is at campaign time, not to do due diligence. Anyway, thank you all for listening to me. Have a good day. Peace.
Counsel, I think I just want to clarify, the city does not endorse or support chastising candidates for their behavior. That is, they should be handled by filing an appropriate complaint with the appropriate entity, whether it is the clerk of the city, clerk of this county, or clerk lieutenant governor's office. So, I'm a little uncomfortable calling out a candidate and using this forum to chastise him without allowing the city to say, "We're not endorsing any candidates." Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bricky. I have nobody else signed up for citizen comments, so I'm going to try and encourage you to speak. If there's anybody who has any thoughts or concerns that you want to share, if there are any other items on tonight's agenda that you want to address, this would be the time to speak to them. We don't have any public hearing tonight, so this is the only time during the meeting that you'll have an opportunity to address the council. So, having said that, is there anybody who would like to take advantage of the three minutes to address the council? Please come up to the microphone. Please state your name and your contact information.
Kayleen Whitlock, 8860 South, 3850 West, West Jordan, Utah, 84088. "He who agrees with me eight out of ten times is my eighty percent friend and ally, not my twenty percent enemy." That's from Ronald Reagan. I think it's something that would behoove us to remember, and I think when we're acting in a civil way, then we get civility back. When we're not, sometimes we don't get back what we would like. So, be the person and be the change you'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please start with your name and your contact information.
Rob Bennett, 2182 West Parr Circle. Honored council members, my comments tonight are regarding Consent Item 5E, on electronic participation by council members for council meetings. I feel that this technology allows for greater participation by council members, who otherwise might not be able to have their voices heard or their input considered, where they currently would have to be excused from participation by lack of attendance at a scheduled council meeting. While I support use of this technology to aid in facilitating contact with our elected officials when they are otherwise unable to attend meetings, I am concerned that this technology could be abused if no consideration is made for overuse by individual members who might not want to participate in the public aspect of meetings for personal reasons. I would suggest that this item be pulled from the consent calendar and some discussion made to consider placing a reasonable limit on the frequency or purpose of electronic meeting participation in the resolution, so that elected officials can know that they can utilize this ability on occasion but not overuse it, and thus prevent the functioning of one of our most cherished American political processes, the right of the public to see and hear the speech and conduct of their representatives and interact with them to verify that their rights and interests are being properly conducted according to the public's will. Please consider these comments and take any measures you consider to be appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right. We will move on to our consent items. Are there, I know that Item G had been asked to be removed by Mayor Rolf. Mr. Bricky, did you want to speak to that one at this point?
Yes, thank you. Given some information that has become available to the city attorney's office just within the last couple of weeks, there is concern as to whether or not the industry standard allows for contracts to be a length greater than five years. Utah Code actually allows contracts to be longer than five years, and in garbage contracts, it may actually be closer to eight years. So, we're exploring whether or not the RFP that initially went out was too restrictive, because the reality is, we only had one bid, and I think we all want to try to find that bid, which is most economically beneficial for the community and its citizens. So, I am looking at and trying to consider whether or not throwing out that one bid and then perhaps redrafting the RFP in a way that allows for, hopefully, a greater competition.
And real quick, I apologize, because I started this off incorrectly. Mr. Bricky and I spoke earlier. On the agenda, it states that this item was moved per Mayor Rolf. In conversations with Mr. Bricky, it was removed at the advice of legal. Mayor Rolf was the one who relaysed that, so I just want to make sure everything's kosher. Could we have that modified on the record to show it was pulled per, I don't want to say direction, recommendation by the attorney's office?
Thank you. I'd also like, before you go to the final consent agenda, introduce to you Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris is the individual you'll be considering as your ethics chairman in Item 5B. Mr. Morris is an attorney, has been practicing both privately and working as a city manager, as well as having served currently as an ALJ. So, making legal conclusions about fact and law is something he's been doing for quite some time. I think we're fortunate to have an individual who has his breadth of experience and expertise to help guide individuals who will be tackling some pretty tough issues if they ever happen. We still have not had a complaint, but I want you to have an individual who you can trust, and the citizens know by face perhaps, or reputation as well, that he's going to take this challenge on earnestly and do so for the benefit of both this community and this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. I know that we had asked for some very specific skill sets and some specific criteria when we were looking for somebody. Thank you very much for donating your time and your talent, and it looks like you've been willing to stick around with us, committed through the end of 2019. So, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. So, Item G is not part of the consent. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for conversation?
I would like to pull 5E, please.
5E? All right. And then, I would like to pull 5F for consideration.
Can we pull 5D just for some questions?
D is in Delta?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Move to approve the consent items, less D, E, F, and G. This is Delta Echo Foxtrot Golf, air traffic talk.
Second. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Newton. Any discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Okay. We will revisit those consent items after, at the end of our business items. So, we will move on to Business Item 6A, which is discussion on possible action concerning the West Jordan Arts Facility regarding scope and budget. And this one is, my name associated with it. We have our friends from CRSA here this evening, and we're able to get the presentation to staff in advance. If not, we can plug in with my computer. If you, if you, okay. As a little bit of a background, for over twenty years, the arts groups here in West Jordan have been working out of mostly temporary homes. For a short time, we were able to use the old sugar factory as a performance facility for the arts, but that one met its demise a number of years ago. And since then, we have been, our arts groups have been performing all sorts of venues, even the Bowery out at the park, out at the rodeo arena, the old library. They've performed Community Room downstairs on the first floor of this building. We are finally at the point where we think we're just about ready to pull the trigger on an arts facility. We started off with budget discussions with a location that had been determined. That location is, for those of you who aren't aware, that determinate, or that location is within Veterans Memorial Park, just outside of City Hall. As you go through that Ring Road that goes around the park, if you go north out to 7800 South, you'll see a little, about two-and-a-half acre parcel on the east side of that little strip that connects to 78. That is where we're, that is the location for this facility that we're talking about. So, to give us a little bit more about the facility and bring up the questions that we need to determine, we'll turn it over to Kathy and Steve.
Thank you all for having us. I'm Kathy Weeden with Sierra State Architects. This is Steve Cornell, and we have our contract partner with us from Oakland Construction. So, please don't hesitate to jump in and ask me questions as we go along, because it's more fun than just presenting. We are designing a new facility and would love to present it to you today. Hopefully, you can see these on your screen closer, better than you can see them up here, but the site is exactly as Chris just defined it. It's just south of 7800 South, just east of the access road into the park from 7800 South and along the Ring Road. It's a great little site for us to work in, for us, looking at this, north is to the left, and the facility is the big box is sitting up towards the left of the screen, which is 7800 South. Right now, the site configuration has the buildings as close to 7800 South as we're able to get them to. Really, the request early on was to craft an iconic visually drawing and striking building that really becomes a beacon for public arts within the city and beyond, so that buildings, it's in this location, so it's very visible to patrons, has great outdoor space along 7800 South as well, facing west. And then, just south of there is a public art area, gathering space. And then, we have a large parking area just south of that. In addition to being able to have access into the park, both on the south side, we have an access point to the west, and then we also hit the, where the cul-de-sac sits today, which, of course, I can't read the address there, but you all know where it is.
7865 South.
There you go. So, we have great access in and out of the site from multiple directions, and so I think we're in good shape. and so I think we're in good shape. The project sits along 7800 South, and of course, public arts facilities are really mostly enclosed spaces. So you see at the left-hand side, the large theater box, the back-of-house areas. And at the front, this very large cortico glassy space that has, and houses the lobby and the gallery space. So this is 7800 South Street frontage that you see here at the bottom of the screen. We want to make sure that we have both a kind of a pedestrian and a bike-friendly zone along 7800 South, enough landscape between 7800 South and the building to be very welcoming. We also have site space to be able to have future marquee and signage, as well as being able to accommodate signage on the side of the building for upcoming performances and presentations. At the front of the building, which is facing west, we have a very large space outdoors, which is kind of a covered sculpture court, gallery space. This gives us access into the building from the west-hand side. But the major entry into the facility is from the south from the parking area. And that space has both a ramp and an access stair. You can see that kind of sculpture garden to the left. That enters into a very large gallery and lobby space that also has an access into a large outdoor sculpture patio to the right. And just to the right of that, where it says West Jordan Cultural Arts Facility, wrapping that corner, is a large multipurpose space for the facility. We have drop-off and pickup here along the south facade. Gives us great access to the building, as well as good snowmelt and other things for kind of seasonal access. So we've been talking design here. We'll just let you know, we are in what's called schematic design, which is the first phase of design. So even though you're seeing a building that looks like it's 100% ready to get, come out of the ground, we still have a few months before we're ready to go. Oakland Construction, though, is ready for us at any time we are to start the project. And I think November is our time to do a little groundbreaking, to get some footings and foundations, start some of our site development work. So we'll keep you all informed how that process goes as approvals move forward as well. So let's give you a little bit of detail as we move through the building. So again, in the scheme, north is facing up. The building is the large boxes you see at the top of the screen, and a kind of a closer perspective view of some of the outdoor site areas. The two big circles you see on the south side of the building are a little art project that we're designing that helps us remember the Sugar silos that were on the south side of the park. So we make sure we have some kind of legacy there. Outdoor seating area and sculpture garden space, as well as landscape around that. So we'll move inside the building, and shall I point?
Sure.
So if we start, this is the main entrance from the south, just at the lower left of the screen. That brings us into a very large, well, Chris wishes it was just a little bit larger lobby space, that is an entry court area that has our ticketing and concessions area at the front of the building. Right now, we have two major entrances into this theater on either side. We've shown a little space that could happen within this lobby for kind of a small concert space if someone wanted to give a little kind of pre-event recital, or use the space for other purposes. The very top of the page are the restrooms for the building. And then this is the large house, 299-seat house, stage just beyond that, and then all of our back-of-house space beyond that. On the south side of the building, we have a large multipurpose room that has a divider in it. So we have a large-scale room that houses, is big enough to seat the whole orchestra. So the seat space that you see on the stage that shows the orchestra also fits within this multipurpose room space. So when we need to have practices and other things happening within the facility, we can both run a band or orchestra practice, or choral practice at the same time we have an arts event. And acoustically, these two volumetric spaces, the multipurpose room and the house and stage, are separated. So you shouldn't have any bleed of noise between the two spaces. Just beyond that, we have dressing rooms, we have load-in access at back-of-house. We have some small-scale performers' dressing or restrooms. And then we have mechanical and electrical and storage space behind the building. So for this facility, all fits on one floor. And if you saw the scheme in kind of its prior configuration and pre-design, the building had some steps and ramps. Right now, we have the facility, so it's all on one level, so that you can make your way through the facility without having to go up and down any stairs or ramps, unless you're in a theater. So for theater access, you come through either this door or this door. You come into the theater, there is accessible seating at this level, and then you ramp down to the front of the facility, or up to seats. And then on the second level, we have a balcony space. The balcony space has seating alongside the edge, here and here, and then four rows of seats behind. So really great, small theater, great views of the stage, really accessible space. We wanted to walk you through the budget. So our direction was to design a building to an $8.5 million budget, and that is where we are today. And what we've come to do is have a quick conversation about how we got to $8.5 million, and then what the other things that are on the docket for you to think about. So we're going to bring our partner here from Oakland up. So Rich and I will talk to you a little bit about this. The building that you see in front of you is designed to function fully at $8.5 million. What is important to realize is that there are still component pieces to the project that we have pulled into an additive alternates grouping. And that gives us an opportunity to continue to add pieces to make the theater, house, stage, and multipurpose room spaces, as well as site, more functional. So we'll give you a little bit of that detail, but Rich will walk you through just the general budget first.
Which one flips there?
Yeah, that. Moves it forward, and the little green one above is the front.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. One thing I want to point out, as Kathy brought this up, about being in an SD phase of construction or design. This is a schematic design. One of my roles at Oakland Construction is to make sure that the design is heading down the right path as far as constructability, and that it's within the budgets that we had set. And so attending those weekly design meetings, I provide input, and we help steer it where we want it to be steered ultimately. And we take snapshots of the design in certain processes. There's a concept, a concept design, which we've kind of gone through. SD design, which is this right here. We'll have another one, which is going to be a DD design development. And then we'll have final construction documents. So we're still kind of preliminary in this phase, in the SD schematic design phase. But we've taken a snapshot of the building, as you've kind of seen it in these last slides, and gone through the costs, and come up with our cost model of about, just under $8.5 million. There's a lot of additional items and ad alternates that we wanted to present. Within a theater house and a theater building, there's many options that someone can choose from. And so we've kind of put these ad alternates as options that the city can pick from and decide what they want to do with this building, and I'll continue on here. This is a little, these are kind of hard to read from this point here, but I'll try to go through them.
If I could jump in just for a second. So the conversations we've been having with both CRS and Oakland, we've been very adamant about sticking to that $8.5 million that the council had previously said we wanted to go to. We've had other, we said that's the number. Then we had them meet with a number of residents with the arts groups, and hear from the arts groups what they wanted. The design came back with a number that was much larger than $8.5. So they've been very good about going back, identifying the different pieces that could be eliminated to get us back to that $8.5 million price tag. However, they have been very forthright in some of their assertions that at that $8.5 million, we're going to be missing out on some of the items that as a council and as those committees, those items that have been deemed as critical. So the purpose, part of the purpose of bringing this up to the council tonight is to say, are we okay foregoing these options for the time being? Or are these things where we want to be sure to include them, and perhaps reconsider the budget? There are two different things that I want to think about as we, as we have that conversation. Number one, what's the building that we're building? Kind of keep in mind the lifespan. This is going to be in the city for a very, very long time. Number two, we're not anticipating that we're going to be funding this completely with city funds. We do anticipate that we'll be having different donors help with some of the, with some of the funding. We have an RFP that I believe just went out, was it today that it hit the newspaper? Or tomorrow's newspaper? That will be advertising for somebody to help with solicitations of funds. In some preliminary conversations, the number that was thrown out was perhaps as high as $4 million. We don't want to bet the farm that we'll get an additional $4 million and start building a $12 million building. But we do want to keep in mind that some of that might be coming. As we're looking at some of these items, these ad alternates, we can, well, what I want to highlight is there are some decisions that need to be made right now. And I don't mean to steal your thunder, but we'll talk about things like the balcony, for example. If we say we want to save, you'll notice third item up in the bottom is the balcony level. We can, we would add $220,000 for our price tag, and bring us up to about 8.7 if we add the balcony. Some items, we can wait a little bit longer, wait till we have donor funding, and then add those in at a later time. For example, the orchestra shell, we don't have to come up with money for the orchestra shell right at this moment. We could do that a little bit later. But the balcony, if we decide later that we want a balcony, that's a redesign. We really need to make that decision now. So as we're going through some of these ad alternates, I'd like us to look at the price tag, and also consider the timeframe in which a decision needs to be made. If it's something that we can say, yes, we want this, but we anticipate using donor funds for it, or we want this and the city's willing to cover the cost, even if we don't get the donor funds for it. So are there any questions before I turn the presentation back over? Okay.
And so what we've tried to do is kind of put some high priority, medium priority, and we've kind of put them in groups, a red group, a blue group, and a yellow group. The red group of priorities, we're looking at the balcony, the manual rigging, the apron for the stage, the stage lighting, which would be incandescent, and adjustable acoustic curtains, for a total of $708,000. Those items, you can kind of do the math and add those up. But we kind of consider those as a high priority group, that are critical to the function of this facility, and to really make it a day one, the day it opens, to be functional and a nice facility going. Our next, Steve wants to jump in here too, if you please.
Maybe this would help on this group, just to talk about these individual items, and just explain them in a little more detail. The red group, the balcony, is one of the highest priorities. As Rich said, it's about a $220,000 add. What that does, though, is, this is something that's very difficult to add later. And if we do any redesign, you're going to be adding money to the project to do the redesign, and you're basically restructuring the building. So we feel like this, to get up to the 299-seat theater that you've asked us to design, this is a very important and critical feature for the project. Currently, in the budget, we don't have any rigging in the theater. This is an ad alternate. Again, the manual rigging is a critical feature of your theater. You can use the theater without it, but it's not a very functional, functional building. So again, this is a $173,000 add to put all that manual rigging in. As part of the project, we are installing the steel to support the rigging equipment. So that will be installed, but again, this is a, you know, an item that needs to be decided on pretty early on. The next item is the apron for the stage. This is the, really the functional area of the stage itself. It projects out into the, into the house. And really, to have a functional theater, this is, this is another key element of the building. This is a $54,000 add. Currently, the way we've got it designed, seats would fill in that space where the stage is, and you would have a very limited depth on your stage if you don't add this feature. Stage lighting, again, this is all the theatrical lighting for the performances. This is about a $205,000 add. This, this would be incandescent lighting, it wouldn't be the LED lighting. We've put LED lighting in one of the other groups. It's not a critical feature, it's a very nice feature to have, but this is simply to get the necessary lighting in the theater for productions. And finally, the adjustable acoustic curtains that, you know, are basically wall treatments to enhance the acoustics, to, you know, make the space functional acoustically, so that, you know, you don't get echoes and reverberations in the building that you would otherwise. And this is a $54,000 add. And then I'll let you jump back in on the blue group.
Keep on going, you're doing great.
So the blue group is kind of a middle priority group. And as Councilman McConaughey was saying, you know, some of these things, they need to be added in the project, like the road base and asphalt, landscaping, you know, the stage drapes. Some of these things, though, such as the stage drapes, they could be added at a later time, and it wouldn't affect the, the construction of the building. We've got, currently, the multipurpose room is not going to be finished. That's a $200,000, $214,000 add. Right now, it would just be a shelled space, it would be, you know, stubbed out with electrical, mechanical, things like that, so that in the future, you could come back in and finish it, if you so desire. And the total for the blue group is $600,000, $604,000. And then finally, the yellow group, these are sort of the, you know, the upgrades that would be really nice to have in the theater, such as motorized line sets, which helps. It's a safer option for, than manual rigging. It's an added cost of $50,000. The upgrade to LED theater lighting, which would then reduce your mechanical loads in the building, and your operational and maintenance costs in the future. That's a $92,000 add. Sculpture garden on the outside is a $35,000 add. The concrete patio outside of the multipurpose room is $13,000 add. And then having that large sliding door that opens up from the multipurpose room area, the hallway into that patio area is about a $27,000 add, for a total of $216,000. And so with this slide, this is sort of, you know, the base budget plus the red group, the base budget plus the red and, red and the blue group, and the base budget plus all three. So you can see the totals of the construction, depending on what you decide to accept tonight. Any questions?
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem McConaughey. I wasn't ready to make a decision on this tonight, but I can do so soon. I do, however, have a couple of adjustments that I've drawn, made up, and I can email a copy over to you. They're not big dollar items, they're just some small things where I have a written copy actually with you. I'd like you to at least look at and incorporate that, or see if that's incorporated. Unless there's objections by some of the other council members. I've emailed it to them too, but that was just today, so they may now have had time to look at that. But I would like to take some time to digest this. I don't know if I can make a decision on this tonight, because that's double on the cost of the project if we go with all of it. And ideally, I'd like to see all of that in there, soon, if not right off the bat, if we could find a way to make that happen. So I'm not opposed to that. I just want to spend some time to see what we can do to find a way to make that happen, because I'd like to see it happen.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So you'd mentioned the 299 seats, is that with the balcony or without the balcony?
With.
That's with the balcony? Okay. So, I mean, to me, there are, there are some things that probably need to be added in order to make this, this functional. And that's really all I've got. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right. Trying to figure out where I want, where I want to start from here. Thank you very much. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up. We can turn back the lights and continue to discuss as a council. Time is of the essence on this one. We need to make some of these decisions relatively quickly, because if we do want to break ground and have that groundwork done before the end of the year, then we have to have the design finalized pretty quick. So I'm not sure how, how long we can wait on this one. So I'm not sure how long we can wait on this one. Personally, as I'm looking at this, well, and I apologize, I called, I was able to get ahold of most of you prior to the meeting, and I talked about an additional $500,000. I had not included the $205,000 for the incandescent lights. So my apologies on the numbers being a little bit off. My personal thought is where we've been able to find $8.5 million to do this, I want to make sure that we do it and we do it right. So I would like to go with at least those red items and include those, and give direction to go up to $9.2 million. However, my intent is that, I'm hoping that through fundraising efforts, we'll be able to do all of these items. One of the things that we discussed with, when we were talking about potential fundraising opportunities, a lot of donors don't necessarily like to just throw in their money to replace public funding, they like to be able to see what additional value their dollars could bring. One of those things we talked about that was a little bit controversial was the multipurpose room. There's really a desire to have that multipurpose room finished and ready to use right off the bat, so there's a place other than the stage for groups to use as they prepare for their performances. However, from a fundraising perspective, we have an opportunity to go to some of the larger donors and say, as a city, we're able to provide the shell of the building, but if you're able to donate $400,000, we will have a multipurpose room that we can name after you that will be used to prepare for all of those performances. So we're much, in a much better position to request those donations and be able to show those folks what their money would be going to specifically, rather than just, well, we're going with a $10 million budget and your money helps offset some of the cost. This way, we can specifically show them what exactly their money is going for. I would like to see us be able to do all of these items, and I think we will be able to, but we do need to set, set an amount. Are there any other thoughts before? Okay. In that case, I'll give it a shot. Give me just a second here. It's always a lot easier to participate in a council meeting when you're sitting in one of those other seats. This middle seat, for some reason, there's just a few more things going on, and I don't know if it's the HVAC in the room, or if it really is 30 degrees hotter right here, but there is no motion recommend, or no motion, no formal motion that's required, but I would like to, to get a feel from the group, just for the sake of having it out there, clear direction for staff. I'll try this. I move that we authorize up to $9.2 million budget for the construction of the West Jordan Cultural Arts Facility.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember/Mayor Protem McConaughey, second by Councilmember Nichols. Any discussion to the motion? It's awfully quiet today. Councilmember Burton.
Just to reiterate, you're pulling the extra money off of a possible donation or something like that? We don't have a source for that additional funding at this time, is that correct?
We have not identified an additional source for that funding. There are a number of ideas that we have for funding, places within the city where we can pull that money from, but we have not sat down and said, X amount will come from here, X amount will come from there. As we know, there have been a number of properties that have been sold that have, where we've received funds into the general fund. We have other, other funding opportunities within the city. For some of these upgrades, I would say that we would anticipate using some of that fundraising money, but the change from the 8.5 to the 9.2, that's $700,000 or $705,000, yes, we would have to find additional sources for that. I believe they're available, but they have not been identified at this time, that's going to be another conversation.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We don't need a roll call vote, but I'd like to, out of habit, so, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
That was a whole lot of nervous squirming for unanimous vote. You guys can speak up a little bit. All right. Well, thank you to our friends at CRSA Oakland, Kathy, Steve, Rich, appreciate you coming out. From here, let's go back to those consent items. We'll start with item D. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification on Prosperity Road. There was some, there was some communication via email that Prosperity Road would be closed, which might impact some of the businesses in that area, and I just want to know kind of what we're closing, and if Prosperity Road is still open for the businesses that are in that area. Yes, Public Works.
I didn't see any microphones light up, so. Mr. Stoker.
Thank you. So a little bit of background on this project. The Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District is bringing up a second supply line into the area. If everybody, if anybody remembers, about two years ago, a contractor, a private contractor, was doing some work and drilled through the side of Jordan Valley's supply line in 102nd South, and it took out the water to much of the southwest part of our city and most of Daybreak. So Jordan Valley Water prepared a redundant line to bring up to this area. The current project already is, is much underway. They're proposing here the first week in October to continue the 36-inch line, which will run from Bacchus Highway eastward about 200 feet. It's only 200 feet. There's a valve box that is, it's, thank you. So there's a valve box that's located right here in this area, which is used to run a connection down to our water reservoir, and it also serves as a booster that runs westward up to Jordan Valley Water's tank, and also one of our Zone 6 tanks. They're proposing to close Old Bingham Highway from this point right here over to the area just west of Prosperity Road. So Prosperity Road will not close. The only part that will close is this portion of Old Bingham Highway. And the reason why they wanted to close it here is so they didn't have truck traffic that accidentally comes down westward and then gets stuck right at the very end of the road without the ability to turn around. So the intent is to close the road here and then put detour signs to direct traffic up to New Bingham Highway. So we don't have any problems with, you know, jams here when they're doing the construction. All of the construction's happening right down here at the end, this 200 feet right here. They're estimating it'll only take about two weeks to do the work, especially with the road closed. They shouldn't have any problems getting that, that work done in two weeks.
Thank, thank you. And is this something that Jordan Valley Water Conservancy crews are doing, or is it contracted out?
They've contracted it out to a company called Vancon, which is an experienced company in utility construction.
Okay. And, and we won't see, since it's, two weeks is adequate time, so we can have, even though it's not a city project, it can be on time, under budget?
Well, it's not our budget. We don't know, we don't know what their budget is, but we believe that two weeks is enough for 200 feet of pipe with the road closed. Our standard, to go to some of the comments that were made earlier, is to put up electronic message boards one week in advance of any sort of city projects that may involve road construction. We'll look into what goes on with some of the private developers that, that do work in the city, but we'll make sure that electronic message boards are posted at this area and this area to inform people that may be using that, that the road will be closed with at least a week's worth of notice. And then when that happens, when we do close that road, we will direct traffic up to New Bingham Highway.
Okay. And do we do anything to communicate to the businesses that the road's going to be closed, I mean, ahead of time, so that they can make announcements to their staff or something along those lines?
I mean, beyond the electronic message boards, I mean, we can make a request of Jordan Valley Water to, to reach out to businesses. Our involvement is limited to the, to the road closure and the electronic message boards.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to approve consent item D.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Jacob, second by Councilmember Anderson. Any discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
We'll move on to consent item 5E. This is amending council rules, policies, and procedures to allow, regarding electronic meetings. This was Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor Protem McConaughey. So one of the things that I wanted to do with this is just kind of modernize our electronic meeting policy with, it's come up in the past as council members have been in different locations on work assignments. And so the Utah State Code that deals with electronic meetings is Title 52, Chapter 4, 207. And there's, there's a couple sections there, and I won't, I won't read the law. There's one section that talks about, we have to, the public body has to, can't have an electronic meeting unless we've adopted a resolution rule or ordinance governing the use. We cannot create anything that's in conflict with state law. And the first section just talks about things that we may consider. We, we as a council may consider to prohibit or limit electronic meetings based on budget, public policy, or logistical considerations. Our system, video system that we have in place would allow up to three to participate, so that's kind of a logical consideration. We may require a quorum of the public body to be present at a single anchor location. We may vote to approve establishment of the electronic meeting in order to include members of the public body. And we may require to request for an electronic meeting to be made by a member of the public body up to three days prior to the meeting. We may also, it's again, "may," restrict the number of separate connections for members of the public body that are allowed for an electronic meeting based on available equipment capability, which I've already mentioned. Things that we must do, which are "shall," is we shall give public notice of the meeting in accordance with Section 524202, which is the Open Meetings Act. We must, we shall post written notice at the anchor location, and City Hall is defined as, is the anchor location typically. It says that in state law. We can have one or more anchor locations, at least one of which has to be in the building and of the political subdivision where the public body normally meets. We must, or shall, provide space and facilities at the anchor location so the interested persons and the public may attend and monitor the open meeting portions of the meeting. So there's things that we may do, and there's things that we shall do as it relates to public meetings. So the next thing that I did is I went and did a search of different, different cities with what they have. As you know, ours was, we had to vote every time, and it had very specific reasons of what would be allowed, some of which fit, and we would, we would suspend those rules to, to make accommodations. So let me just give you one for West Valley City. They last updated theirs in 2006, so it's 11 years and it's two sentences. Says the city council may hold electronic meetings, and members of the city council may electronically participate in meetings. Second sentence, in order to electronically participate in a meeting, a member of the city council shall provide notice to the city recorder prior to the meeting. And we have to still have the 24-hour, but there's no vote, there's, there's no restrictions. Taylorsville City, which is very similar, it's three sentences. The city council may convene electronic meetings when necessary. They have to provide each member of the city council at least 24-hour notice of the meeting, so saying to the council that there will be an electronic meeting, which is actually part of state law, and include a description of how members will be connected to the electronic meeting, whether it's a video/audio connection via the internet, or it's a telephone connection. Salt Lake City has something very similar, and Provo has something also very similar. A lot of them just reference this section of state law. So what I had proposed was to, at first, I thought it might be good to have some, some restrictions. Obviously, with our technology, we still would have to have four council members here at the anchor location, which is, which is compliant with what the law is saying, and that's a technology issue. That still gives us a quorum here at the, at City Hall, and it would permit up to three remote locations. And what I originally had put in the resolution was that if a council member notified the city clerk at least seven days in advance, then no vote was to be required. Councilmember Burton is in favor of having a vote to allow electronic participation by a council member. And my solution, my, my consensus to kind of accommodate that was if it was less than two- to six-day advance notice, then we would vote at the electronic meeting to provide that, and then in accordance with state law, if it was less than 24 hours, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything. That is a little bit more wordy than what pretty much most of the other cities use that I could find. And so that's what I'm presenting, is basically that it would be a permissive electronic meeting. A city council member would just notify the city clerk that they would be absent and desire to participate electronically. No vote would be necessary of the city council, and it would only be up to three council members. I will note that in checking with those four cities, that there has been minimal, if any, electronic meeting usage. It does happen from time to time, but it's not abused at those four cities. Salt Lake City last changed theirs electronic meeting ordinance in 2002, West Valley in 2006, and Taylorsville in 2011. Can I open any, any questions?
Councilmember Newton?
Thank you. First of all, I'm totally in favor of it. I think we have the technology, and we've seen it used here. I see no reason why we shouldn't. Mr. Bennett, in his citizen comments, brought up something that I had never even thought about, that, that a council person could never show up here. And I don't think that's the intent. So I would suggest that we add that the council person, if they, I don't know how to word it, if they, if they, they need to be here, present physically at least three-fourths of the time, in order to have that privilege, something of that nature, or whatever we, we decide, but it's something I think worth considering.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I sent over a couple of adjustments to Councilmember Anderson. Did you get those forwarded to the council members? And those adjustments will make it so that instead of the person simply notifying staff and it automatically happens, unless the council puts in a negative vote, I wanted to turn it around to more of a positive thing, so that council member who chooses to connect remotely need to notify the council, and the council would actually vote yes to let them do it each time, instead of just coming up at a time when they decide they want to vote no, so that they can be on the positive side, and the council would know ahead of time, instead of just the staff, and they would be the ones that would screen it, instead of the staff screening it. So whether they notify him anytime beyond the two-day notice, then the council will have the opportunity to permit them to connect remotely. I'm hesitant on putting a list of criteria on there again, because that's kind of what was the issue we had with our last one, is trying to determine what the criteria was and where it should be. Instead, I think we ought to look at each individual case separately and determine whether we feel that's appropriate or not, instead of whether a council previously felt that was okay or not, which is why I voted no. that was okay or not, which is why I voted "no before."
Try lefting the mic up a little bit.
Why I voted "no before" is because I felt that we were not doing what the rules said, and it wasn't because I didn't want someone connected, it's because I wanted to follow what the rules are. However, I did include an extra "whereas," expressing the importance of meeting in person is well-desired compared to meeting remotely.
Can you try adjusting the mic?
Well-desired compared to meeting remotely. So I wanted to emphasize that our first obligation and choice, whenever practical and possible, would be meeting in person, and then the remote would just be in cases where it wouldn't, so that, to help avoid the abuse, simply because it's easier to do it remotely without having to put forth an effort, because I believe in person, we make better communication when we see each, and we can talk with each other, and kind of like what I did just a minute ago, where I got to have the opportunity to talk to somebody just before they left. That was the short of my long comments.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wasn't really going to speak on this, I was just going to listen to the discussion and then vote, but a lot of, a lot of topics have been kind of brought up, and, and I don't think, speaking for myself, anyway, I, I think that most of us who have run for office and are now sitting up here, did it because we wanted to be here. I don't, I don't think any of us are looking for excuses not to show up. I can speak for myself, I was here a lot before I was up here. I was sitting down there, a lot. And I think most of the candidates who are running to be up here next year, who aren't currently up here, are here tonight, for example. I, I think it's a sickness that we all share, but Melanie agrees. But I think we want to be here. I don't see, I don't see the potential for abuse. Now, we have seen a case in the last year and a half or so where there was an exception, but I believe that is going to be such a rare exception to the rule, that I, I don't feel the need to write it into the, the ordinance or the rule, however we want to call this. I really believe that, for the most part, we want to be here. We, we signed up for this job, and we worked really hard to get it, and, and because of that, we want to do it well, we want to do the best job that we can, especially if you ever want to run again for anything, you want to make sure you do a good job. So, in that, in that vein, I, I think the ordinance as Councilmember Anderson has proposed it is sufficient. I don't, I don't feel the need to add in the voting requirement. In fact, I think that's kind of the point of this, is to, is to write that out. With the, I mean, the exception that you put in there, as far as the two-to-six-day, you know, really short notice, then we vote on it, I think is a good, it's a good compromise. So I, I'm in support of the, the, the rule change as it was written by Councilmember Anderson.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Former Councilmember Bennett brought up a good argument, and I, I do, I do sympathize, but on, on the other side, I completely sympathize with the argument that was just presented by Councilmember Jacob. It's, you know, it comes down to me really simple, a simple fact. And I hope you don't mind me doing this, Chris, but a few years ago, Chris had to use this excessively, because his business called on him to do it. And I'm telling you, as a council member who works with Chris on a regular basis, his absence actually probably made him, not necessarily, this could sound in a negative way, but I mean in a very positive way, he was more effective, and the reason being is because he tried to overcompensate for that absence. The fact that he physically wasn't here fostered so much more communication behind the scenes. And it was, it was, so I, the argument to me, I guess, as I say, there is some weight to it, my experience hasn't taught that. And if someone is that apathetic, that they're going to use it to simply not come to council member, or council meetings, and that's their excuse, everyone up here is going to know it, they're not going to get re-elected, because the constituency is going to know it, they're not going to be responsive, they're done. It's a one-term person. And, and beyond that, if they just choose not to come, that's not being addressed by this at all, because state law this year just changed that, if you have four absences in a row without being here, you're off the council, period. But that actually would have happened last year in another event, that would have happened, had that been clarified in state law at the time. So, to me, it's, I mean, I see it, there's, I, I see, I'm sympathetic to the, to the idea, but that's just hasn't been my experience. And I've been up here eight years, and in my eight years, I've seen a lot of electronic meetings, and me personally have even used it a few times. I think I've used it maybe six times in my years, maybe seven. This year, three times so far. My fourth will be the second week in October, and that's it. It's the only electronic meeting I'm going to try to use this year, is the second meeting in October. And, I don't know, I've just, I don't think we need to do that. The state law is pretty simple. I think of all these on here, the examples that Alan presents, West Valley, to me, has the vision, the clarist. They say, "State law permits it, can we permit it? Move on. Make sure the city recorder knows." Because the city recorder is obligated by state law to make sure that the notice is put out 24 hours, and that the council knows it's happening. And it is, it's on the notice, 24 hours, we're going to have an electronic meeting. I don't even think so much that we have to limit it to three, because state law doesn't require it. The only reason we have a limitation of three is because of the video capability. But as a body, does it have to be video? It can be telephonic as well. And on a member of the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Board, we had a meeting once where we had two persons physically in attendance, and the other seven, the entire body was on a telephone call. And we held a closed session in that environment, and it was legal, because it needs to be noticed, and you can participate. And I don't, and we were able to conduct business. It was an emergency situation where we just had to give 24-hour notice, we held the closed session, and we moved on. It was a legal, it was a legal emergency. So, the issue for me is state law, let's just say, I love West Valley's wording, two sentences. It's a permissive use, and if you abuse it, I guarantee you it's your own peril. You will not be re-elected if you abuse it on a regular basis. People will know, because you're not responding to the constituency. They can see through that. Anyway, that's, that's my argument, I might have other things to say, but I just wanted to address that one issue. Thank you.
Mr. Bricky.
It's actually, Mr. Dodd, sorry, we only have one microphone. We are lawyers, we all sound the same. All we hear is droning, so. I just wanted to make one clarification with that, the difference with the water board, with the city council meetings, we are required under state law to have four physically present, to have a quorum present. So that is one restriction under state law, that is a little different than the, the water board meetings.
Councilmember Nichols.
Just for clarification, I'll yell out, since I didn't have the mic. So, in Title 52 of State Code, where it says that we may require a quorum of the public body, that's under the "may" section, not under the "shall," you helped me define that. Is it somewhere else in, in State Code that says that we have to have a quorum? Because it here, it says here, "public body may." Is it in Chapter, Chapter 10 says we have to? Okay. That would be helpful, just because this one, so happy to oblige whatever State Code says, that's what we do. But again, I mean, that goes down to the other argument before, if we say we still permit it, just electronic meetings, we still have to adhere to the titles of State Code, we can't go contrary to that. So by not putting it in there, we're reducing the chance that we will be contradictory when there is a change in the future.
One of the things I've learned is that when you sit in this chair, chair in the meeting, you, as a courtesy, wait till the end to share your thoughts and comments. I know there are others that would like to speak again, but since everyone's spoken once, I'll take an opportunity to share my thoughts, my thoughts now. As I'm looking at this on the, the legislative write-up version that's showing the, the changes, I'll just kind of go through this in order. There's a new line that's being added under the electronic council meetings that says, finally, closed meetings are not allowed as part of electronic meetings. I believe there is an allocation made in State Code for certain types of emergencies, so I would rather not try and debate which takes priority, and I would prefer to pull that from this section. The limitations, I could rehash a lot of what's already been said, I would like to remove that entire limitations section. I think it's trying to guess the circumstances too much, and we never know what's going to happen. I'm, I, I could imagine somebody has a family member who has appendicitis and goes in for emergency surgery. Well, they can participate while, while their family member is in surgery, but do we disallow it because it's less than 24 hours' notice? If we require notification of all of the council members, well, what if one council member is out of town and unreachable? If there's a decision made in that council meeting, but, let's say the council meeting is held electronically, one person was not informed because they were out of town, we make a decision in that council meeting that somebody disagrees with, does that give them basis to argue that that meet, or that decision was made in an illegal meeting because not every council member was contacted? I, I worry that opening up too many of these things causes too many problems. Another, just public health, what if there's an outbreak of swine flu or avian flu, and it's not encouraged to meet in large public bodies? I, I would rather not try and guess all of the, all of the issues, and just stick, as was suggested, with what West Valley has, a simple two sentences. I do completely, having lived through this, understand that there is the potential, and we've seen, we've seen people abuse meeting attendance in the past. I think we can handle that under ethics, though, and I think we would be well-served to visit what we require under meeting attendance in the ethics section, rather than trying to address ethics of particular council members through the electronic meeting. When it comes to the noticing section, absolutely, the clerk needs to have as much notice as possible, and my thought would be, we just, as a, as a habit, every regular council meeting that we have, or every meeting that we have in this room, we schedule as an electronic meeting. I thought I read something that would said every, or any special council meeting would be allowed electronic participation as well, but I don't think that works, because if we're doing a workshop and we're down meeting with the planning commission, I'm not sure that we want to even try and do something like that remote. I think all of us can act, hopefully, all of us can act like adults, and for those instances where that's not possible, I think the ethics approach is the appropriate route to go. So I would be in favor of scrapping everything, well, scrapping that one line that says closed meetings are not allowed as part of electronic meetings, and then scrapping everything under limitations, and using verbatim the verbiage that we have from West Valley. So, seeing as there's still other comments, we'll go to Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem McConaughey. I don't believe the word "council" indicates an individual person, I think that's a group as a whole, so I think if four or more members do that, then that is a council approving that situation. And the reason I like the council to do it, instead of putting criteria in there, is because, just as you has described, the criteria will change, and it will be the criteria that we have absolutely no idea, and that may come in the future, and I think it's good for the council to have that opportunity, that flexibility. Although the staff may be notified, I think it's good that the council is notified and, and simply approves that at the council meeting. The other parts, I'll completely agree with, but I'd like to have, know that the council knows what's going on, and knows who's going to be where at the meetings, and just like we get in our agenda further in advance, so that's, I would still like to see that part left in there. I'd like to have the council have the positive point to it, and be able to have some say.
Councilmember Anderson.
If, I don't want to stop the discussion if there's, if there's more discussion, but I'd like to make a motion.
Floor is yours.
So I would like to move to approve Resolution 17-188, striking C8, as written in the packet, I'm sorry, C8B limitations, and all that, C8B, I'm sorry, striking the last sentence of conditions and elements, finally, closed meetings are not allowed, that should be struck. And then Section B is deleted, and reads, "The city council may hold electronic meetings, and members of the city council may electronically participate in meetings. In order to electronically participate in a meeting, a member of the city council shall provide notice to the city clerk prior to the meeting." And I guess we could leave the, the legal construction severability of Section 2, and that's, that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Burton.
Yes, I would like to, I'm trying to think of the right word, adjust that motion by having it, adding to the city clerk to notify the council, so the city clerk is notified and passes notification to the council. "Amend" is the word I was looking for.
So Councilmember Burton's offering that as an amendment? Would that amendment be acceptable to the maker and the, oh, Council, or, Mr. Bricky?
By what means of notification?
If, if I, Mayor Protem, if I may.
Let's let Councilmember Burton first clarify the amendment he's offering.
There is not a clarification in the ordinance for the person to notify the city clerk anyway, so I would leave that up to the option of the city clerk to choose the best source to provide that.
Is that amendment?
I appreciate the amendment, I don't think it's necessary. In the State Code, again, 52-4-207, Sub 3BI, actually 3B, "In addition to giving public notice," and this is part of the "shall," "a public body that convenes or conducts an electronic meeting shall, in addition to giving public notice required by subsection 3A, provide notice of the electronic meeting to the members of the public body at least 24 hours before the meeting, so that they may participate in and be counted as present for all purposes, including the determination that a quorum is present." It's already a requirement, it's a "shall" in state law, so I don't know that the amendment is necessary.
Any further conversation to the motion?
I will just add the thought that while I appreciate wanting the council to be able to have a say, I, I'm really nervous about allowing a, a group of the council to decide whether or not another elected representative is allowed to participate. I, I want to avoid the appearance of impropriety or politicking by potentially allowing a, a group to disallow a representative to fulfill their, their duty to vote on behalf of the folks that they represent. So, no other comments? Let's vote.
Mayor Protem McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Moving on, Consent Item 5F. This is the item that would strike from Code the requirement that the city council meeting adjourned by 9:00 PM unless the majority of the council votes to extend beyond that. I ask for this one to be pulled, and I'm, I'm just hoping for thoughts and ideas on this. It seems like almost every meeting, we say, we, we stop mid-statement, extend the meeting, and allow us to go further. It seems like a nuisance more than anything. However, it does kind of set the expectation that we should be clear and concise in our remarks, get to the point, and move on. So having at, at least a target date is something that I kind of like. However, we haven't enforced it, is this code just becoming clutter? But what message does it send to staff if we say we're giving up on even trying to end by 9 o'clock? But on the other hand, should City Code be the proper way to try and address agenda management? So, I'm completely on the fence with this one, so we'll go for comments first to our city recorder, Melanie Briggs.
Oh, sorry, no, I don't have songs.
Maybe not then, okay. Councilmember Burton.
I would say a jar eight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem McConaughey. I think because we ch- I think, because we change that rule every time we're not done by then, I don't think that's decreasing our time, I don't think it makes any difference, I think it looks kind of silly, if I may, that we have that rule there, and we just, when that time comes, oh, we have to stop and change this rule. And I don't think that our meetings are necessarily going to last any longer, because that's not there, I think we, all of us, would still like to get home a little bit sooner, some of us more than others, and I think that might take 10 seconds off of each meeting.
I apologize, Councilmember Nichols, I'm going to jump in real quick before I give you the floor. I think Councilmember Nichols and I are the only ones on the dais who are here when we regularly had meetings that were going beyond 11:00 p.m. So, from my perspective, it seems like when we bring that up at 9:00, it kind of sets a flag that, hey, we need to really get things going. I think the latest we've been out of here, at least since I've, my six years, has been, I think, 1:00 a.m., so I have seen an impact on it. Anyway, I didn't mean to speak, I don't mean to be hypocritical by speaking twice before I even give you the chance to speak once, but my apologies, I was. The floor is yours, Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. No hard feelings. So, true story, that's a famous saying that my dad uses, this is a true story, it happened in this council chamber, many of you were here, and the 9:00 rule literally changed the outcome of who our city manager became. This is not an insignificant issue, it actually is. And for those who were not present in that meeting, we had an interim city manager on the agenda, was to be appointed, city manager, was the last item on the agenda, 9:00 hour came, and the council chose to adjourn. And the political will, as frustrating as it was, because I was on the losing end of that decision, that city manager was forever lost from this city. This is actually a really important issue, and that one actually is near and dear, because the 9:00 rule actually prevented me from getting the city manager I wanted at the time. Now, that being said, now it's clear the air, let's just talk about the issue, I'm willing to look at it with an open mind, and the open mind is, is it good or bad? I personally like it. The reason I like it is the check that Councilmember McConaughey just brought up, the fact that at 9:00, we have to sit back and say, you know what, it's 9:00, we better hurry, push off whatever we don't really need to do, and let's get the item, or the business of the city done. I like that, and I like the fact that it's in code, it's not a rule, it's not something we just suspend willy-nilly, it's actually in code, we shall end at 9:00, and it requires a majority vote to extend beyond it. That's just me. I like it. And just for that one little check, just a reminder, we're at 9:00, it's getting late. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Would it behoove us to, if we were going to include an end time, to make it later so that we're not suspending, we're not stopping the dialogue at a council meeting, whether it be a public hearing or a business item, so we can stop to go past 9:00 if we moved it to 10:00? So that it, we still have that deadline, but we're not spending many council meetings stopping the dialogue to have a vote to extend? So, I just bring that up as a thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree with much of what has been said, I think it's a little bit silly and it's a little bit arbitrary to have just a time out there. Why is it not 9:30, why is it not 8:30? It's just a time. So, I am in favor of removing it from the ordinance with the reminder that, under our rules of order, a motion to adjourn can be made at any time. So, knock yourself out at 6:35. Just throwing that out there, thanks.
Councilmember Newton.
Let's try this. Move to approve ordinance 17-52, amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code according to the following sections as listed here.
Councilmember, sorry. Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Newton, and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. The one thing I would also point out is, we've had, we have staff that are present who have been here all day, I think it's beneficial if we give them at least some sort of glimmer of false hope on the horizon that we might be out by 9:00. And I'm not sure how arbitrary 9:00 is, after we've been sitting three hours up on the dais, that seems about a good time for a 10-minute recess. And as far as interrupting conversation, if we plan a little bit better and watch the clock a little more closely, we could make that motion to extend the meeting at 8:30, if we see the meeting is obviously going to go beyond. It's only when we lose track of time, get caught up in long-winded rambling, like I'm trying to exemplify right here, that we end up with a last-second interruption, so, I hadn't said that. Instead of offering an alternative motion to go through till 10:00, let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yep.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes 4 to 2.
All right, that concludes all the items that are on the agenda. Last up, we have, we do have remarks, and I want to quickly apologize, I failed to recognize Representative Cheryl Acton here earlier, so thank you very much for taking the time to be with us. She is the one who now represents District 43 in the State House of Representatives, so honor and privilege to have you here, thank you. Are there any other remarks? Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, I did mention this before, but I wanted to bring it up again. For the remainder of the year, I plan to be at every meeting, with the exception of the second one in October, just for everyone's awareness. Thank you.
Can I, and you're aware that in November, the schedule is?
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, it's the third Tuesday, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other remarks, I would entertain a motion to move to closed session and adjourn from there, and I will let whoever wants to make that motion read the reasons therefore. Councilmember Nichols.
I will make it easy. I move the council to go to closed session and meet for the reasons stated on the agenda and adjourn from there.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Anderson. As far as discussion to the motion, I heard Councilmember Burton say that that was cheating. Any other conversation to the motion?
That's experience.
Experience, not cheating. Okay, let's vote.
I will ask a quick question of our city attorney slash interim city manager. Is that sufficient?
That's you.
David.
City attorney slash interim or interim city manager?
I didn't.
Just to say that they moved to adjourn as stated on the agenda, I think it's okay.
For the reasons stated on the agenda.
For the reasons stated on the agenda.
Works for me.
Okay, works for me, good, just wanted to make sure, so we don't have any challenges on this. Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
We stand adjourned.